Megan, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or meditation. Thank you. Melody, would you do roll call, please?
Councilman Holt.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hinkey. President Dawson.
President. This is just a reminder for everybody to turn their phone on silent or either airplane mode. If it goes off during a council meeting, you will be fined for Mr. Hinkey's Neighborhood Association. Right? Is that correct? Can I get a motion for minutes of approval for April 28th, 2025, please?
So moved.
For the Public Health and Safety Committee? I got a motion for Mrs. Hines.
Second.
Second for Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of May 5th, 2025 council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion for Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations and introductions. We have a presentation we'd like to make. Ms. Angie McKee, would you please come forward, please? Maybe I better come down there and do this. Good evening, council. Angie has been my work wife for the last two years. She's kept me on track and makes sure I need to do the things that I need to do on behalf of the Elkhart City Council. She would be leaving us sometimes in July, but I was at... July 31st, but I was at an event this weekend that made me realize that I need to make sure you got to smell your roses, you know, and get our appreciation before that. So, on behalf of the Elkhart City Council and the citizens of Elkhart, Indiana, we want to thank you for what you've done for us, and we appreciate it, and we want to wish you well in your endeavors. And we will be over to visit as soon as you let us know it's ready. We'll make sure one Monday night, we'll drive all the way to Goshen. You close on Mondays? Okay. We'll figure it out, but we'll be there. But thank you very much, Angie. Angie's usually not speechless, I'm surprised. Please, please do. Please come forward, do that, Angie. Let us know.
Why are you kicking us to the curb?
Brent wants to know why are you kicking us to the curb?
Not true. So, an opportunity has come full circle to my lap that, for those of you didn't know, back in 2004 to 2011, my husband and I owned McKee's Irish Pub in Goshen and sold it in 2011 to do other adventures. And the opportunity has come back to me full circle to buy my bar back. So that's what I'm doing. I'm going back into business for myself. Has nothing to do with anybody here, so I'm not kicking you to the curb, Councilman Curry, I promise. It wasn't an easy decision, but it's a necessary one due to just some other things going on in my life. Puts me closer back to home and so, so yes, I'll be opening my own bar. It will not be a late-night party bar, I promise. It's going to be more of a dining club experience, so come have some cocktails. Kitchen will be open until 10 o'clock at night, so those of you that are out working in your yard and need someplace to go, now you can drive to Goshen and come see me. So, our target open date is August 1st, and I'm here till July 31st. So, I'm here till the end of July. I had commitments with Dove that I promised her I would stay and handle until the end of July, so that's what our...
As a matter of truth, wasn't it this council that drove you back to the bar?
Angie, thank you very much.
Sometimes it was this council that drove me to drink, so, um, thank you.
And please, please join us afterwards.
I will.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Angie. And so, Melody, you will be stepping up to do that. We appreciate that. You've done a great job thus far, so we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Moving on to unfinished business. Reports of council committees, there are no reports of council committees. Ordinances on second reading, second and third reading, there are no ordinances of second reading, second and third reading. Ordnances, resolutions referred to committee, there are none. There are no table ordinances, resolutions. Ordinances on first reading. Melody, would you read Proposed Ordinance 25-0-16 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-16. An ordinance appropriating $1,400,000 from Motor Vehicle Highway Fund for the Street Department SALT faculty design, build, construction project.
All right. There are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 25-0-17 by title?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-17. An ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, authorizing the city to issue one or more series of its economic development tax increment revenue bonds relating to a housing project to be located in the Boulder Economic Development Area and approving the authorization, other actions in respect thereto.
Thank you. There are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 25-0-18 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-18. An ordinance appropriating $1,327,621.32 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund to other funds account and authorizing the controller to transfer the funds to the local road and bridge matching grant fund.
Thank you. There are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Resolutions. Proposed resolution, I'm sorry. Proposed ordinance 25-0-19. Would you please read that by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-19. An ordinance appropriating $2,219,895.95 from the local road and bridge matching grant fund for the reconstruction of segments of Stevens Avenue, Francis Avenue, and Second Street under the Community Crossing Matching Grant Program.
Thank you. There are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Resolutions. Would you please read Proposed Resolution 25-R-14 by title, please?
Proposed Resolution 25-R-14. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, approving the order of the Elkhart City Plan Commission with regard to the Economic Development Area Plan for the Boulder Run Economic Development Area and approving the determination of the Elkhart Redevelopment Commission that said area is an economic development area.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in the second to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines. Mr. Huber.
Good evening, council. Mike Huber, Development Services Director, City of Elkhart. The ordinance, or the, sorry, the resolution you have before you this evening is part of the process of completing and creating the Boulder Run Tax Increment Finance District. The Boulder Run Tax Increment Finance District is located at the near, just east of the intersection of Gene Wood Drive and Hinkey Street. South side of Hinkey Street, east side of Gene Wood Drive. It's a completion or extension of, I think, the existing Manor Estates subdivision. We have a, working in partnership with a developer to complete that subdivision and construct 86 new single-family homes, anticipated to be priced between $300,000 and $400,000. The, the city has recently engaged Zimmerman Volk, Zimmerman Volk, to create, to do a housing study and analysis. That analysis indicates that the city has an unmet need of 368 single-family detached homes per year over the next five years. This is 86. It's certainly not going to meet all of that. But just to speak of the shortage of new housing construction that we have in the city, this is certainly a project that helps us further and meet some of those, those objectives. The Redevelopment Commission and the Economic Development Commission have, have the ability and have the tools to help construct infrastructure improvements. The intent of this, of this Tax Increment Finance District is to provide the TIF generated by the project back to the developer to offset some of the costs of construction of the sewer and the streets and the water, infrastructure that goes along with that. The developer has indicated the total cost of those improvements to be about $7.1 million. Generally, the TIF will raise about $3.1 million. So, so we're getting there. That's actually equates to a reduction on a per-lot basis of about $40,000 a lot. So, it, it helps make sure that those, that the, that the lot, that the lots aren't unreasonably priced, and it helps reduce the cost of those homes. In speaking with the developer, that additional $40,000 per lot in the current housing market that we have would impact their ability to sell the homes as quickly as they would need to if they were doing it without the assistance of the city, meaning that the project probably isn't financially viable for them. So, but for the city's investment in assisting with the development of the infrastructure, this project likely doesn't happen. Upon completion of all 86 homes, we anticipate that there'll be $25 to $30 million of new AV created by the project. So, that's a significant benefit to the city related to that, that new investment. The Redevelopment Commission is anticipating to pledge 80% of the TIF towards the support of the project, keeping the remaining 20% to help offset costs related to public safety in the area generated with the new, the new residents in the space. And happy to address any questions you might have.
Mr. Fish.
Thanks, Mike. This is pretty exciting for us. This is a big build. On page two of, it's after Exhibit B, you know, that you were talking about, page two of that plan. $25,800,000 in new assessed value. Go, and that's paragraph one.
Yep.
If you go down to B, the timeline, four to seven, is that the total build-out period?
That's correct. That'd be the total build-out of all 86 units. Correct.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The...
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yep. They are anticipating two phases of infrastructure installment. So they'll do the first phase, and then they'll build about 32 or 33 homes within the first phase. The developer's also present in the evening, in the council chambers. Just, this, in case something I can't answer.
We'll just benefit...
And then they'll do, they'll do the second phase.
All along.
Correct.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. Thanks again, Mike. So are these homes all to be purchased? Are these to be rentals? Do we have any?
The intent is that they're for sale, single-family home.
For sale, single-family homes. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hinke.
So let's, can we have on record then that these, there's no intention nor could there be the possibility of rental?
I'm not going to go on the record saying that. The developers in the audience...
Yeah, because I, I understood...
There's not a, there's not a prohibition against it in our development agreement.
Sorry?
There's not a prohibition in our development agreement. The intent is for these to be single...
Was there discussion about rental?
There was not. There was never discussion about rental during the negotiations.
Can we then, I was just going to look up, because that was going to be a killer for me. I mean, that, that is my district. In fact, that's quite close to my home. My biggest concern right now is traffic, traffic outlets. Mr. Mishler and I looked at it on the map earlier, and there seems to be places to disperse traffic to County Road 6 as opposed to coming west and joining an already overloaded Gene Wood Drive. So I would hope that we would improve those properties, those roads to handle that load. Because if they were all sold, 86 units, at 2.5 or three persons per and two cars per household is the, is the estimate, what that would do to the local roads? That would be one. Number two, it would have been nice to have some realtor speculation on $300,000 homes, the number of days on the market. And I would tell you, at 300,000, you know, less than 60 days, Elkhart. And I'll call realtors to get an update. So I don't, I don't see that there's a major problem with that. That's 3.5 million ask. The average square foot, that was the next piece.
Yeah, I can let the developers talk about the square foot.
And then the number of years to break even from the 3.5?
Well, let's, David, let's get your question answered on the number of square foot. Can we get the developer up here?
Well, I was just trying to catch Mike while he was there, but whatever.
And then Mike can come back and...
And they could talk a little bit about, you know, the average time on market or those. They have their, certainly they're building new homes, and they know kind of what their absorption rates and things are as well. But, but again, the difference between a $350,000 house or a $410,000 house, that's the gap we're filling with this, right?
And if you wouldn't mind while you're up there, just tell us who the principles are of this investor group?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Conway Herschberger. My home address, 21063 Cheltenham Boulevard, Bristol, Indiana. Our entity, Emerald Chase Land Development LLC, is myself and Chris Herb, sitting back here also. Our intention with this project is 80, total 86, single-family homes. When we start, our plan is to start construction this summer, and with current market prices, we expect retail prices of the homes to be $330,000 to $400,000. With, with some homes probably being above $400,000, we expect to have some custom, semi-custom, pre-sold homes that aren't necessarily model homes or spec homes. And we expect to build this out in two to three years for Phase One. We're really hoping and expecting to, this time next year, to be looking at costs for Phase Two already because we think it'll go that fast if we can get them built to bring them to market. Were there some other specific questions?
Yes.
Oh, the, the square footage. The minimum is 1250 square foot for a ranch-style home. We expect most of the homes to be single-story homes with basements and anywhere from 1250 to 1500 square feet. I'm also a real estate broker and have been for 28 years.
So, a couple of things. One, I know Mr. Herb, so I, I don't doubt the quality of the project, knowing that, so I appreciate that part of it. The second part, though, is the average square foot per the area. So, I was interested in that as well, realizing home values have gone up quite a ways. But there's Manor Estates, which would be the, pretty proximal to this property, right? It's on the same street.
Correct. I'm very familiar with it, yep.
But they're, they, I don't think there's anything there under 2,500 square foot. So they would be closer to the 3,000 square foot area. So these, that 12, 13, and 1400 would be unusual. And then there's another, the back end of a development, as you know. And I would suggest to you that those are 2,000 to 2,200 areas. What, what would your study say?
Well, the thing that we need to look at is not just square footage, it's market, current market values. And existing Manor Estates, I think the last sale in there was 225, 250,000. And so, majority of our homes, if not all of them, are going to, the values will be more than the values in existing Manor Estates. You build a 2,500 square foot ranch-style home, you're talking 600 to 800,000.
We're good with that.
Right. We're not. We can't do that. We wouldn't be here if that's what we had to build.
Mr. Fish had a question.
I have one question to you.
Sure.
So, 1,250 to 1,600, 1,600 is a nice-sized house. It was laid out properly. But if somebody comes to you and says, "I'd like a 2,200," and this is what I'm thinking about...
Oh, yeah.
You'll, you'll adapt to a plan that they might present to you?
Sure, yeah. We, this is not going to be an open build to any builder. It'll be approved builders only, and it'll be all architecturally controlled to, to, to protect everyone's investments, existing neighborhoods, along with our new neighborhood. But with the R1 zoning, some of the lots, especially the cul-de-sac lots, are bigger and will allow for much larger homes if someone wants to build it, which we're okay with. We're not going to build a 2,500 square foot ranch model home and expect to sell it for 600 to 800,000. That's not going to happen here.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, so going back to that area, so Phase One, what will be the average size home just for Phase One? And will that Phase One influence Phase Two, not only by timing, I realize it will, but by square footage and pricing as well? You're expecting a return, and you already have your established margins, so you know what your minimums are.
Minimum square footage of the homes is what you're asking?
Equals value, right. Equals the assessed value, right.
For Phase One, I mean, as mentioned earlier, the, the minimum for R1 zoning is 1250 square foot. And so our covenants are going to follow that as far as a minimum. But what we expect on average for the, again, for a ranch-style home, single-story home with a basement, to be between 1250 and 1,500 square feet.
Because that will also tell you what market you attract to is by the size of the house as well, right?
Sure.
For the value. And I think when you guys first came to us some time ago, my concern at that point was square footage, you know, matching square footage to an extent. Now, exterior, matching those of surrounding areas. So the exterior is brick, it's vinyl?
Exteriors will be similar to what we've done in other projects, what other builders that we're working with have done in other, other projects. There may be a little bit of brick or stone, not necessarily requirement. One thing we are considering, we think it'll help the project overall, is, is sprinklers. We're, we're not set on that yet, but we may be requiring sprinklers.
So this will be more of a subdivision in and of itself?
Correct.
And what other amenities come with that subdivision besides water, sewer, utility? From the fire, from the city's point of view, hydrants, right?
Correct.
What about open space and average size percentage of green space per house?
I wouldn't have that number for you, but, you know, there will be sidewalks, public sidewalks. This site, it's not just a field. It's not all tillable ground. It's been, the property's been, for lack of better words, let go for a number of years. And so there's trees that have grown randomly throughout the property that are 20 to 30 feet tall, oaks. You know, we're going to try and keep as many of those as possible to make this more of a park-like setting. That's, that's our goal.
So, one last one, if I may. What is the total acreage out there?
I believe 37, 38 acres, somewhere in between there.
So it's about .44 acres to, per lot? Does that sound about right?
I'm going to have to believe you. I don't have my calculator with me.
But then I don't know how much the...
But see, the, the other thing we have to work with is stormwater retention.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that, that takes up quite a bit of space.
And that's my worry, is, you know, taking down all of that space, and then you have the actual footprint of the house taking down even more space yet. So 86 times the actual footprint of the house, 1250 as it may be, times 86. I'm just trying to look for green space out there. Not that it will change. You're the developer. I'm not. But I think it's also a piece of the sales part, but you're the realtor professional, and I'm not.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think there's going to be a lot of green space. You know, we have a number of cul-de-sacs. You know, we're, you know, people are backing up to each other. You know, the lot sizes are, a standard lot is 80 by 120 in this development. And so the cul-de-sac lots are going to be much bigger than that.
So, at the end of the day, this is a resolution. I support it based on Mr. Herb himself, but I would like more information as we go forward.
Thank you. Is there any other council discussion? Thank you very much, sir.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you.
This time I'll open up to the public for a public hearing. Does anyone in the public would like to hear? Speak with regards to this resolution? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Is there any other council discussion? I would like to thank you for investing in our community. I think your addition to our community will be much, is, is well-needed. The detail you provided with us tonight, and to Mr. Hinke's point, as you move forward, if you can provide us with more detail, we'd appreciate it very much. Thank you very much. Melody, would you do a roll call vote on this resolution, please?
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Motion carries. Vacation hearings, there are no vacation hearings. Other new business. At this time, I'd like to also acknowledge our, the greatest controller in the state of Indiana. Okay, Mayor, I'm sorry. I was out of line.
But you have to buy your own gift.
I'm sorry. Presentation from the Mayor Board of Works, Board of Safety. Mayor? Other new business? No, no. I don't know. Hold it. Wait a minute.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll just be brief. June is a very busy month for our city, especially our Parks Department. Coming up very shortly, McNorton, Ideal Beach will be opened up. We also have Rhapsody coming up in a couple of weeks and Jazz Fest, so I encourage everyone to get out, enjoy our parks, and see you down at some festivals and say hi.
Thank you. Mr. Hinke.
Couple of points for Mr. Jones. There was a note in your March 26, 25, you reported damage evidently from cast-iron pipes that rusted through, and there was a toilet that broke away from the wall and caused significant damage. I'm not sure how much that damage is, but I was just kind of surprised that in a municipal building, I don't know if inspections happen, if we should see that that's safe for everyone, even employees, and how that would occur, age of the building and all of those things. Second, I had need to get a hold of, there was a citizen concern that really had to do with the police department. I forwarded it, although it took me two messages to get it right to the chief, and he took care of it right away. Actually called that constituent, which was very helpful, and I appreciate that. Thank you for the response.
Who else? Ms. Ki.
I would like to let everyone know that last Thursday, me and Brent and a few others as invited guests, had an opportunity to tour Jackson Street with the new condos being built and apartments. And Arvis, I think I saw your apartment, and we were in it. But they are really nice. The architect is beautiful, the floors, the hardwood floors. And so just want to give a, give a hats off to Dave Weaver and the Impact Group, and thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. Mr. Fish.
So I just want to announce that the Elkhart Environmental Center is having a fishing clinic this Saturday from Saturday, it's 8 to 12, at High Dive Park. I've been part of that from the beginning. And this year, the first 400 kids get a free rod and reel. So bring your grandkids down, or your, Rod, you can come down and get a rod. I mean, we'll, we'll get one for you. We want to, we want to get everybody in Elkhart taught to fish. So, anyway, thank you for that. It's really a great event, and it's very well-attended. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the business? Mr. Holtz.
I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to go to Amici, new restaurant, right outside the Aquatic Center. Wonderful, the nice collaboration between local restaurateurs, and there's a lot of good things going on in Elkhart. Please seek it out, and I just wanted to thank the builders who are putting in the new subdivision. Hasn't happened often enough, and we appreciate your investment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor?
Thank you for the invitation, Dwight. I appreciate it. I'm not a fisherman, but that, that is a well-attended event, well-attended event. So for those of you who do like to fish, and anyone else that may be in the, in the earshot of, of my voice, I would hope that today, it's Saturday, correct? And hopefully we'll have good weather, and we'll have the kind of attendance that we had last year. had last year. So let's hope that happens. In the meantime, Jamie, are you? Jamie, come here. So while I normally create a standard of twenty years before you get a key to the city, well, that standard still remains, so he's not getting a key to the city. But I do want to say that we've gone through some tough financial times in regards to the city as a whole and during the transition from the Nice administration to the Robertson administration and beyond, Jamie has been an anchor and has platformed our ability to move and traverse not just state statute, but grants, applications, regardless of whether it's edit or any of the grants that we've received from outside of our funding and revenue streams. Our audits have not only been very, very well managed, but for the most part, the findings have been almost nil. And Mr. Arce has been very proud of that fact, as a matter of fact. He has, he's made sure that he's taken it upon himself to ensure that we've been in good stead financially as a city. And quite frankly, if you take a look at our balance sheet, and I'm sure, Alex, you do that on a regular basis, our balance sheet has done extremely well through multiple administrations, as a matter of fact. But Jamie can only claim fifteen years. No, I'm joking. He can only claim nine, headed into, headed into ten. So we're going to miss him dearly because he has taken on another responsibility in which he will continue to use his CPA chops, but it won't be with the city of Elkhart and we will sorely miss him. But he has made sure to make himself available to us. I'm not sure if we can contract him, given that he'll be working full-time in his other capacity, but if we could, we would. But I do want to say that when he decided to say, I will stay on as the Controller of the city of Elkhart, I was a very happy camper. And I will, and we will continue. He has, his deputy will step in in the interim and he has trained Aaron Coons very well. But we will also ensure that we go on a search to ensure that we bring the same type of capability that Jamie had to this position. But in the meantime, we want to make sure to let, to say that we recognize Jamie's work and his relationship to the city of Elkhart from the time he started until now and beyond. So I'd like to say thank you so much for the work that you've done for the city of Elkhart and I'm sure all of you would like to do the same. Jamie Arce, we appreciate you and we're going to miss you. Not too many, not too often does a controller get a standing ovation.
Mayor, thank you for your kind words. Counsel, thank you for this opportunity to have served alongside you, with you, as we've accomplished so much, whether it's the first four years that I served as Deputy Controller and was thankful to be part of the River District team on the finance side as we began and birthed that to now being Controller and working to give us the foundation and the tools that we need to be able to carry, all that we need to carry forward with all of these exciting projects that the mayor and the administration has. And it's been a great run and I appreciate all the support that everybody's provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you very much. Neighborhood associations reports. I know the PM Moran Neighborhood Association met yesterday.
Yes, we did. So on behalf of the PM Moran Neighborhood Association, I'd like to let the public know what's going on. But we had another very good meeting and as always, we meet for nine months at the PM Moran Park Pavilion and then for three months, we meet outside in the green space there in front of PM Moran. That way, the neighbors that don't come to the meeting can see us meeting and wave as they go by and let them know we're alive and well. And it was a very good meeting. There was four people that had never been to a meeting at this meeting, so that was very encouraging. And two of the couples have moved in our neighborhood within the last couple of years and we asked them the question, what attracted them to our neighborhood and how did they like it so far? And got nothing but positive remarks from them and we talked about having a picnic and everybody said, yeah, we definitely got to do that again. It was just another good meeting and we emphasized how it's good to know your neighbors. Officer Bias was there, it's good to be able to ask him police questions. And when I was on my way down here, there was a policeman sitting at the corner of Hawthorne Drive and Dying Heart waiting on everybody running that stop sign. Thank you.
Any other neighborhood association? Mr. Crabtree?
I'd like to announce that the Strong Avenue Neighborhood Association will meet tomorrow, June second, at seven PM, in the Strong Avenue Triangle, which is Strong Avenue, South Strong and Highland Avenue at seven PM. Our speaker will be Elkhart City Building Commissioner Tim Visstein, so all are welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saying none, we'll open up for the privilege of the floor. Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that was not on the agenda tonight? If so, please come forward, state your name. Tori's not part of the public, he's part of the administration. You want to say something, Tori? All right. Are you unmuted? Can you unmute him? All right. We're working on it, Tori. You're going to tell us how we're going to save money, right? You're not going to, you're not going to tell us that? Okay. Is this going to cost us money? Okay, okay, all right. We can talk there.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, thanks. Now that I said it, it won't cost us money. Evening, counsel. I just want to remind everyone and everyone in the public and on the council that Thursday is our annual presentation to the council at Public Works. We hope that you all can attend and we look forward to having you.
Thank you, Tori. I forgot to mention it. Thank you very much. So Thursday, six o'clock, Public Utilities. All right. Now I can go to privilege of the floor. Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that was not on our agenda? If so, please come forward, state your name. Anybody online? Nobody online? All right, we'll close the public privilege of the floor. No scheduling of committee meetings. Could I get a motion to accept communications?
Don't move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Michler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can I get a motion for adjournment, please? Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Michler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.